My name is Ralph Hendrickson and on behalf of the interfaith community builders of the Crosswicks Borden Town area, I welcome you to one of our town talks.
Yeah.
Throughout our history, we have had town talks, providing a public square for dialogue. In this troubled world that we live in, from the horrific events that took place in Israel, to the mess that we have in the House of Representatives, where a party cannot get its act together for our government to function, down to the very local level at the Boards of Education. If ever there was a time in our history for dialogue, when the, when the nature of dialogue is fraught and bitter, it is time for reasonable people to model what dialogue and civil dialogue should look like. This evening, I am privileged to have Tom Barclay, a retired central office administrator, and Chris Bond, presently still working as a high school teacher, teacher of teaching people, students to think historically. Tonight, Tom will give us what really matters, that schools are governed by law. And it is for us as citizens to see that we stay within those guardrails of the law. And Chris will tell us about his experiences in the classroom and how he's dealing with the issues that are causing so much consternation at the local board level. So let's begin tonight with Tom, and thank you all for joining us.
Thank you, Ralph, and thank you to everyone who's come today to talk together about this very important issue. This is my forty-third year in education. And I went into it because of the impact of those teachers who worked with me. And you know, my goal was to do what they did for me for a bunch of other people. So it's thrilling for me to talk about education. I'm going to share my screen. And let's see, that's it. You should be seeing a big building, right? So as Ralph said, this is from the interfaith community builders. I didn't know exactly the title of it, but that's why we're here, trying to build community and having faiths come together for the benefit of the community. So the title is School Boards, The New Battleground, which of course we know it is. It, it seems to be in New Jersey, heating up actually. So what I thought we would do is make sure that we understand how schools work. As I can tell you from many years of experience, that most members of the public do not understand how schools work, how integrated everything is and how there aren't really people sitting in schools thinking about how to mess things up, right? It's a concerted unified effort to educate our children for the 21st century. So our objectives again, understanding the challenges that are facing New Jersey public school boards and communities, to learn about the, or to understand the chain of authority in education in New Jersey, small state, lots of school districts, to exchange opinions, to understand our rights and responsibilities as members of schools and members of the public and the community, to understand the impact on teaching that all of this consternation is causing, and on schools, because all of this is having an impact on the schools. Just a couple of expectations and norms. And I always go through these norms if, if I feel like, you know, we don't know each other, just so we know how we operate. So the idea of confidentiality, great to share ideas, but keep people's names and faces out of it when you share. Listen to one another with respect and open mindedness, suspend judgment as best you can. This one is important because I get around, I go to school boards regularly, not even the ones I work in, just to listen to conversations. Very often, people will speak the thoughts of others and the concerns of others. And here, it's better to speak your own thoughts, your own reactions, feelings or experiences. And the last is develop a sense of curiosity and discovery, question old assumptions and seek to understand rather than to persuade. So that doesn't seem too onerous, right? And I think if we abide by these things, we'll be in good shape. Just so you know about some of the statistics regarding New Jersey's educational system, there are in this tiny state, a state that is probably smaller than one of the counties in Texas, there are six hundred ninety-seven local educational agencies, LEAs. Then of those, almost six hundred are operating school districts, meaning like the kind you would imagine, they have school buildings and they operate school. There are eighty-five charter schools operating in New Jersey, and those are schools that have specific ideas for how to improve education and they get charters for them and they follow their charter. A Renaissance school, of which there are three, are partnerships between a charter school and a public school. And there are non-operating school districts. They get state funding, but they have no buildings. Where I used to work, there was a ascending district that had no buildings. So they get funding for the students. Then there are two thousand five hundred eleven schools, two thousand of them are elementary, three hundred, almost four hundred are secondary. And then there are a hundred eight secondary and elementary, so they're typically K-eight schools, where a high school is in ascending district. There are one million three hundred thousand students in New Jersey schools. Fifty-eight thousand of them are in charter schools. And the last state aid for public education in New Jersey is nine point nine billion dollars. So again, there's a lot going on in New Jersey and I just thought it would be interesting for you to understand the sort of size of things here. That's nearly, I'd say that's nearly six percent of all population in New Jersey are in our schools on any given day. Education in New Jersey is governed by the Constitution of New Jersey. You remember your civics, anything not specifically written in the Constitution becomes the right of the state, right? Education is not specifically mentioned. So it is the right of the states to educate their populace. And in New Jersey, and you'll see the Article Eight, Section Four, Number One, it's the legislature that has that authority. So the legislature is the one who has to provide for maintenance and support. And you remember thorough and efficient, because some of you are possibly nearly as old as I am, and some maybe a little bit more. You'll remember the conversation about what constitutes a thorough and efficient education when there was a funding issue and in New Jersey, the Supreme Court of New Jersey actually governs some of that funding, unlike any other state. And interestingly, it has to provide that education for children from ages five to eighteen. So therefore, it's the duty of the state of New Jersey to educate the children. This is just a repeat, and then these are points. So when they went about funding thorough and efficient, the legislature had to create laws and the legislature creates lots of laws regarding education in New Jersey. It's important to know that New Jersey cannot make laws regarding education that are in conflict with the US Constitution or federal laws, like civil rights kinds of laws. So it's all sort of check and balance system here. You know that the state has its legislative committees, right? The Senate has one and the Assembly has another. They meet regularly about it, they propose laws, and some of those laws come from other sources we'll talk about. And they pass laws related to education, that's their job. And the committee is the one that considers them, that's not news to you. So besides that, there's an executive branch. So that executive branch, you know, is the governor. He appoints the advice and consent of the Senate, Commissioner of Education, right? And our current Commissioner, Angelica Allen McMillan, is the acting commissioner. It's important to know that she's been an acting commissioner for two years, right? So that should tell you something. Right? Why wouldn't they have approved her in two years? Something to keep, keep in your mind. The Commissioner of Ed is the chief executive school officer and supervises all public schools. That's, you saw there were nearly, there were several thousand schools and seven hundred school districts. She sits on the governor's cabinet and advises the governor. But she also does this, she recommends legislative initiatives, suggests rules and regulations, produces research, conducts initiatives to meet the state's educational needs, and serves as the liaison between local school systems and the federal government. There's a whole board of New Jer, of state commissioners that meet. So what does the Commissioner do? A bunch of things. Serves as the Secretary of the State Board of Education. She develops code, you know, and her staff. She is the one, by the way, who apportioned state aid to local districts. Not all school districts get the same amount of money, right? So it's largely based on population of students, but it's also based on demographics within that district. Because it's, it's about equity and not equality there. She is to administer those regulations for classifying students with disabilities. She ensures that districts adhere to legal and state board requirements. And interestingly, that happens once every three years. The Department of Education visits local schools and goes through every aspect of their school operations. And they must pass or they have to improve. She conducts the statewide test, you know, causes them to be conducted. And then, under the Commissioner or alongside of the Commissioner, but under the legislature, is the New Jersey State Board of Education. I don't know if you've ever attended one, you certainly should, because it's worth attending. There are thirteen members appointed by the governor with advice and consent of the Senate. They serve for six terms. And they are diverse and from all areas of the state. No, no two members of the State Board of Education can be from the same county. They meet once a month, they have public comment that you can make comments at, either in person or electronically. I've done both. It's pretty neat to be able to express your opinion about something. And they do, they do hear them, they keep them and record them. So sometimes, you know, you can have a positive impact, and that is one of the things that I'm trying to say. There is built in to the system multiple ways for members of the public, parents or otherwise, to interact with schools. The Commissioner is the Secretary to the State Board of Education. And these are the current serving members. Kathy Goldenberg has been president for two terms now. So what do they do? You'll know that, you will know anyway, that there is state laws, right? The statutes. And then the education world has what are called administrative code that exists for most every one of the departments. So they adopt the code, the state board, that sets the rules to implement state education law. She advises the governor on educational policies and she understands and makes sure that whatever they're writing is not in contradiction to state or federal laws. So that's pretty important there. They conduct the meeting, as I said, in Trenton, down by the ballpark, on the first Wednesday of every month. And they publish the agenda in advance, you can see it on the state board website. So you know what they're going to be talking about. There's a link on that website that you can make a comment electronically. Which is what I just said. So what's the LEA? And this is where, where the title comes from, right? Boards of Education in New Battleground. So local educational authorities are commonly called school boards, right? So Boards of Education, School Boards. So important to know that because in law, they're called LEA. So one thing that you probably don't know is that school board members are actually state officials. They're empowered by state law to govern the public schools at a local level. They are held to the same standards of any other state level official. And they're representing their community with authority derived from the New Jersey Constitution and the legislature. So that's a pretty direct connection. The laws, rules and regulations governing public schools pass from the legislature to the State Board of Education. The State Board staff and the Department of Education is given the authority to carry out those mandates created by those higher bodies. So you see the flow there. It doesn't happen the other way necessarily. You know, it doesn't bubble up from one of the local educational authorities. It could be recommended to somebody, but it typically is not that way. And the Board of Education, the LEA, at the local level, develops its own policies. And having read more policies than I care to remember, they almost look like looking in the mirror with state laws. Important, right? So one of the things I know that folks are trying to do is to get on a Board of Education. And I've had many people come to my office to chat with me about it. Typically, it's for good reasons, right? It's for people who just want to get back to the community, they want to make the schools a better place for their children and the children of other folks in the community. But then there are some who have a particular axe to grind. And they believe that if they get on, they can really blow the place up, make a big difference and have their way. In all cases, when that has happened, in my experience, the individuals learn within two years that it was probably easier to make a stink from the outside of the Board of Education than it is on the inside of the Board of Education, because there are all kinds of limitations on board members. One of them is they cannot act alone, they have no legal authority unless they're sitting around a duly called meeting with a quorum. That is the only time they can make any kind of legal changes, right? So an individual can't make board decisions, can't take action and cannot speak for the board unless the board has already told them, yes, I agree with you, you can do that. This is very stifling to folks who are sort of animated over a particular issue. Then likewise, you know, you live in a community, so you have your neighbors, you're at the ShopRite, where I ran into, can't even tell you how many members of the public who want your ear. And it's cool, you should listen to them. But that needs to be brought back to the entire board. You cannot promise anybody anything that way, because it is a violation of the Code of Ethics. That's very hard for some folks, because you know, you're kind of in the know and want to take some actions. This is the Code of Ethics that every single Board of Education member has to sign or they cannot serve, even though they were elected, right? So let's go right back to the beginning, we started with the Constitution, right? Down to the legislature, over to the State Board of Education, to the Department of Education, the Commissioner, then to the local level, with the school board. First thing, I will uphold and enforce all laws, state board rules and regulations, court orders pertaining to schools. That's a good thing. I will make decisions in terms of educational welfare of children and will seek to develop and maintain public schools in which, which meet the individual needs of all children regardless of ability, race, creed, sex or social standing. The three things the board members can do, make policies, plan and appraise. They cannot develop educational programs, that's not their role, right? So they can make policies, they can plan and they can evaluate things. So they have to say that they'll carry out their responsibility, not to administer the schools, but as a group to see that they are well-run. You can see that when there are people who are sort of chomping at the bit to make a change or something they truly believe in, this is very stifling to them, they find that right away, within months. And then they all learn to get along, generally. So they understand the authorities with the Board of Education. Don't make promises and don't take any actions in private. Those happen all the time, you should know, from my experience, and there are consequences. This one is important, because you do want all the voices in the room. If everyone is singing the same song, how are we going to be singing the right song? So they have to promise that they're going to not refrain from speaking their own mind. Confidentiality is super important. It also is not regularly followed, I will tell you. If you want to hear anything about the schools, you go to the Acme or the ShopRite. And you hear more than you care to. And the responsibility to find and employ the best possible people for that job. The most important of which is that chief administrative officer. Then they're supposed to be supporting and defending school personnel. And the last one is, if I get a complaint, I'm going to the superintendent to share that with them. And it says, and will act only on complaints at public meetings only after failure of an administrative solution. Right? There's a chain of authority that I'm portraying here that works actually in, in real life. We're almost done with the chain of authority and then maybe something a little more sexy. So that superintendent is the chief executive officer of the school district and the educational leader in the community. So choose well. There's a bunch of responsibilities, but I've only highlighted a few. The superintendent is responsible for developing, expanding and evaluating the educational program, as you would expect. I'm going to skip a couple. To develop in-service or training programs for the improvement of staff. You can read some of them yourself here. Awareness of legal mandates relevant to public schools. The superintendent has to be very knowledgeable. Most school systems today, because of a lot of the issues that are going on, have on full full-time basis at board meetings, attorneys, educational law experts, which is a huge cost, but they're necessary now. And establish good lines of communication for everybody, right? The, the best superintendents bring people together and talk about what the community wants. So there are connections between state law and educational law. And the statutes, which is the NJSA, the annotated statutes, those are the laws. So in this one, eighteen A is state law. The section of law, of New Jersey law dedicated to education is eighteen A. This one, in the law, it says, there should be instruction on the Holocaust genocides that are required throughout the curriculum in appropriate ways. And it says, every Board of Education shall have it in place. And then it tells you why, right? So those were laws created nineteen ninety-four. And by the legislature, that was their job to create that, because of his felt need then and how appropriate is it now for us to consider education about the Holocaust. The Department of Education then writes the code, the, the rules on how that should happen. And this is what it says. Ensuring the Commission on Holocaust Education Curriculum, by the way, the only curriculum, two curricula are developed at the state level, these two, the Amistad and the Holocaust Education Curriculum. So you see the law and you see the code. Then school districts write it into their curriculum, and that is checked, you can say, every three years. Another example, right? So this one is creating a bit of a, a storm. Is this New Jersey state law, the civil rights law? This was recently updated. And the important parts of that law that you see on the left, it says, there was a creation of the Department of Law and Public Safety, a division known as Division on Civil Rights, with power to prevent and eliminate discrimination in the manner prohibited by this act against persons because of race, creed, national origin, ancestry, age, marital status, affectional or sexual orientation, gender identity or expression, familial status, nationality, disability or sex because of their liability for service in armed forces of the United States by employers, labor, labor organization, and you get it, right? Take no other actions against discrimination because of race, creed, color, national origin, ancestry, and it goes back through that. So it expanded the level, these are known as protected classes, right? These are protected people. So that was an expansion recently, and you'll see here, it's literally repeated in New Jersey educational code. So that it's followed, hopefully, right? Because, I mean, who wouldn't, who wouldn't agree with that? Some, some people. This is an example of one of the, one of the districts is going through quite a bit of machinations about essentially the transgender issue. This is posted on their webpage, because it's a law. Right? It's the same words again. So skipping, skipping a point here, this is the point where I'd like to just be able to say, there are avenues to have redress of your concerns. And parents do have some input into what their children can or will learn. So these are the comprehensive health and physical education standards created at the Department of Education and in two thousand, twenty twenty. So this is social and sexual health, and this is a hot button issue. So this is social and sexual health, and this is a hot-button issue for some folks. Uh, this is why I'm showing you it. So you can see why uh, the Department of Education believes this is important, uh. It, you know, it's a person's ability to communicate and interact with each other sufficiently. Or meaningful relationships with others, interact in healthy, appropriate ways. To have, develop respect and accept differences in individuals' race, religion, gender, identity, gender expression, ethnicity. Disability, social, you get the idea. So the purpose of that is to create relationships which are meaningful and uh. Useful to a person then in school and in life in general. And you can see. It goes by the end of grade two, by the end of grade five, by the end of grade eight, and by the end of grade twelve. In most cases, uh, twelfth graders are seventeen, eighteen years old, right? So you would expect them. You can see how it goes up. And um. You know, you can see that by the end of grade uh, two. It's talking really about how to get along, and then um, how people can be different, um. So, and that difference not bad. Um, that we should accept people for the way they are. By the end of grade five, they're starting to get more specific about gender, gender expression, or sexual orientation. By fifth grade, young people, I mean, I've been in schools my whole life, um, are asking these questions. And it's important to be able to have those conversations in a meaningful way. Purposefully, then by grade eight, they're talking about um. You know, same kind of situations, but here they're introducing the idea of making healthy decisions about sex. And by grade twelve. You know, it's really everything that you would want a, a functional adult to understand and appreciate in their lives. So suppose you're one of those folks who doesn't really want your child to uh, to have a conversation about that. So there is here, um, because there was so much tumult really about it, um, the. Commissioner put out this clarification. So. This is by the end of grade two. Discuss the range of ways people express their gender and how gender roles stereotypes may limit behavior. Right? They're very young children. They're eight years old, uh, seven or eight. So it's going to be um, appropriately taught, right? And this is the commissioner explaining why, why are we doing this, right? So. You know, classic things like uh, girls believing, okay, that math and science are boy subjects. And you know, the boys could be understanding that arts are for girls, you know, you get how that goes. Stereotypes happen to develop very, very young, um, as it turns out. And the idea of the standard is to. Help students understand that um. People are going to be who they are, and that's a good thing. So this goes up to grade five, right? And by grade five, they're talking about puberty, puberty. Right? And then it says, explain common human sexual development and the role of hormones. And it talks about all of those things, romantic sexual feelings, masturbation mood swings, timing of puber, pubertal onset. And you can imagine that might get some parents concerned, uh, and that's fine. What I do wanna point out here is that she is saying here, it's important to note that those are examples. Those are not required to be taught, the things that appear in parentheses. Nevertheless, um, I think it's important to have those conversations. This is grade eight, and this probably really sets some folks off. I can't say that. You know, reading it like that, you, you know, there are factors that contribute to making healthy decisions. One of them is defining the different types of sex. That a person could have by the uh, grade eight. Still think it's worthwhile, some folks may not, um, and what to do about that. So. I do wanna point this out. Any child whose parent or guardian presents to the school a signed statement at any part of the instruction, instruction in health, family life, education, or sex education. In conflict with his or her conscience or sincerely held moral or religious beliefs. Shall be excused from that portion of the course. Parents and guardians seeking, parents and guardians seeking to exercise this option should contact their local school principal. So that, that is what you would do if you were like, no, I don't want my child to learn that. Um, you get to decide there by writing, putting it in writing, meeting with the principal and saying, I want my student, my child. Not to participate in that. So your particular rights and your child's rights that you chose for him are. Are upheld, but the others who don't have an issue with it are not. This is um. One of the school policies where it talks about, okay, if you don't want to have your child participate in that. You just need to do whatever this says, right? So, and it's really not that challenging, honestly. Um, one of the school districts that I go to uh, regularly to sort of. I call it making good trouble, um. Is uh, the school board member wanted to be able to create a policy which excused a student. From all of the health and physical education. And that was denied, uh, actually by that superintendent, and it wouldn't be legal. Under um, education law or state law. Uh, physical, health and physical education is a required uh, course in every grade level. So you can uh, have some say in your child's upbringing and what they learn. You just have to take action. This is worthwhile having. You can find it online. It's the New Jersey's Law Against Discrimination. Number one here is where I got all of those words, uh, that I wrote in the last ones. But there are five main points uh, to it. It is one hundred twenty-seven pages long. So I thought, you know, let's not read the whole thing. Tonight. And we'll go on to uh, a situation which is occurring mostly in Monmouth County, but not all in Monmouth County. There is a policy, and you should know. That all school districts, pretty much ninety percent, maybe higher, all subscribe to something called Strauss Esme. They are a legal firm that produces educational policy. In accordance with state law. So this one is fifty-seven, fifty-six on transgender students. Why would they be making a policy about transgender students? Well, because they are victimized uh, in society very frequently. At all ages. In, in every place, right? And you have seen that a lot of upheaval regarding transgender people. Across the country, and. You know, it's interesting that people have opinions about how others. Choose to live their life. I'm not one of them. I think one should live the life they want to live. But uh, the school has created a policy, and there is a law, right? We just read it. Gender expression or gender identity is a protected class, right? So the schools have to make uh, efforts to protect the protected classes of people. This is why there's a policy. The thing that is getting under people's crawl, really, is this section here. The school district shall accept a student's asserted gender identity. Parental consent is not required. A student need not meet any threshold diagnosis or treatment requirements to have his or her gender identity recognized and respected by the school district. The school or school staff members. In addition, a legal or court-ordered name change is not required. There is no affirmative duty for any school district staff member to notify a student's parent. Of the student's gender identity or expression. It's the red words there, right? No affirmative duty, meaning they are not required. To report the discussion that they've had with that individual child about uh, asserting their gender identity. Uh, several districts, one, two, three, five, five districts changed this um, policy. And put in stipulations for occasions when the school staff member was required to tell the parent. And you know, from one perspective, you say, oh, well, of course, uh, you know, why wouldn't the parents want to know? Uh, well, you know, there are stories uh, where individuals went home and said they. They believe that although they have a boy's body, they feel like they're a girl, and some of them wind up on the street. Some of them wind up in uh, turmoil. And they are a protected group. Right? So. Turns out, uh, with that New Jersey law against discrimination. A person would be discriminating of staff member. Would be discriminating and putting a student at risk, uh, potentially, right? Notice it doesn't say this. Under no circumstances may a school district staff member notify the parent. It just says they are not required. They don't have any affirmative duty. To say this. Right? There are a couple of occasions where they're absolutely required by law. This is not one of them. So it goes on to talk about it, and something we can talk about when we have our conversations, um. About, there's a whole policy on that. So. The New Jersey Attorney General. Challenged those five districts and said that's against the New Jersey law against discrimination, uh, there is a hold on that. So it turns out um, that there are policies that are mandatory and policies that are not mandatory. And it's an option. So those five school districts have understood that now, and they're just simply withdrawing the entire policy. Which is kind of um, you know, it's a bit dangerous, and still, by the way. Um, in violation of the New Jersey law against discrimination. And school staff members are at risk if um. They, the word is out, right? If they out an individual for violating that person's civil rights, the child. We're almost there. I'm gonna skip this part. And I'm just showing you this to say, uh, it's a full-long explanation. Um, I'd be happy to have this shared with you. And it'd be fine with me. But there are laws upon laws and layers and layers of laws that have gone into all of these. No one sat in a school district and said, you know what, we need to make up something. Right? They're there for them. They're not trying to uh, change anybody's children. They're not grooming, as some people would say. They're simply trying to protect the young students. So these are the laws that go right up to the United States Code, right? The civil, the civil rights code at the federal level. All the way down to local district board policies. Throughout every section of this, there were built-in ways for parents to interact with those who are making decisions about their children. Right? You vote for the legislature. You can attend the hearings. You can go to the school board and comment on it. You can write to your legislature, you can talk to the commissioner, you can talk to school board members, you can show up at the school board. You can talk to the principal, can talk to anybody. On the, all along the way, so you shouldn't get to a point, need to get to a point where it blows up. Uh, there is uh, one last slide that I have, and then Chris will uh, speak, but um. Just one of the things that uh, is being used. Is parental rights and as is expressed in the Fourteenth Amendment. And you can see there is from nineteen twenty-three. To twenty-five, to seventy-two, to two thousand, it keeps changing, right? So it turns out that in two thousand, this was in Washington, and it had to do really with a grandparent's right for visitation. Uh, but in the end, what it wound up doing was. It opened the door for individual judges in states to apply their own rules to parental rights. The case did affirm that parents have fundamental right to make decisions concerning the care, custody, and control of their children. And this is what I think the uh, individuals who do not agree. With schools not telling the parents about a child's decision to change gender or even investigate it. Uh, this is what they're using, um. And uh, New Jersey has not interpreted that rule that way. It's just not the way they've interpreted. So I'm hoping that I didn't overwhelm you. I literally just trying to build an understanding of. Be careful what you ask for. If you're one of those uh, uh, school board uh, candidates, and you think you're going to go in and make. A change uh, to what you want, um. The processes that are in place that I described are there to make certain that no one individual. Can control the lives of all of the individuals. Um, but there is safety nets throughout, um, so. Think carefully before you, you run, and when you go to school boards now. Take the time to read the policies. They're online. The code is online. The law is online. And you know, be a part of a solution, I think, is what I would be going for, because I found that always is best. Okay, um, so Chris, do you want to um, jump right in?
Absolutely, um. So thank you, uh, Tom, for that, um. And what I'm, what I'd like to do is just kind of build off from what, what Tom started with my own little slideshow, um. Nowhere near as impressive as Tom's. I was just thoroughly impressed by all of the. The fancy lines coming in from the side and, and the thoroughness of your presentation, but what, what I would like to do is just kind of tell you a little bit about myself. Um, and then walk you through, you know, what this administrative code means from a practitioner's point of view. So I'm a teacher in the classroom. Um. So my name is Chris Bond. Uh, I've been a teacher of historical thinking. That's what I call myself now, because I really do think that's. Where we're going. Uh, I think the same thing is true with math teachers and science teachers. We're, we're really pivoting to, to stress. Disciplinary thinking rather than, you know, teaching a, a body of knowledge, um. I've been a teacher at, uh, in the Westminster Plainsboro School District for thirty years. This is my thirtieth year. I taught at the South School, actually even before it was South, there's just W, Westminster Plainsboro High School. Um, I began back in ninety-three, ninety-four. I was at South for thirteen years, and I've been at North for seventeen years, um. I'm also a lifelong Catholic who now meets with the Quakers uh, down in Crosswicks. Um, and I, I was a catechism teacher for five years at Saint John's in Allentown. Um, and I've been a resident of Cheshkiv for fourteen years. Um, you see some pictures here. I have a son who's a sophomore in. College, uh, his name is John Bond, nicknamed Jack. He loves to fish. He's getting his degree in environmental science. My daughter is a so, a senior in high school. Uh, this is her driving down to the beach, her first day driving the car. Uh, and my wife Laura is also a, uh, an educator, um, and she actually is a school board member, so she, uh, she has some direct. Knowledge about what Tom was talking about in terms of limitations, and that we are dog people, so this is our dogs, uh, Tucker and, and uh, and Colby. So what I wanted to talk about is um, just the, the administrative code or what, what I, what we, what we refer to in, in the classroom as state mandates. Meaning there, there aren't many mandates that the state requires in terms of instruction. Obviously, there's. There's curriculum and, and um, and state standards, um, um, but in terms of. Laws that are mandated, meaning you must do this, and if you don't do this, there can be um. Negative consequences in terms of funding from the state for your school district. These are things that you have to show that you're doing. So the first um, mandate, um, uh, and it really is, I'd like to say these mandates fall under. Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion laws. So the first mandate was the Holocaust and Genocide Education, um. Mandate uh, that was done in nineteen ninety-four. If you remember, Schindler's List came out in nineteen ninety-three, and, and so, um. Really kind of spurred a lot of conversation about why are we not? Schindler's List came out in nineteen ninety-three and, and so, um, it really kind of spurred a lot of conversation about why are we not teaching. About the Holocaust in our, in our schools in New Jersey, um, uh, more formally. And so that. Mandate requires from nineteen ninety-four until now, and I happen to have started in ninety-three, ninety-four. So. I've been, I've been teaching as long as this mandate has been here. And, and by the way, it was, it was voted in unanimously. Christie Whitman enthusiastically signed the legislation. Um, and what it asked is that we, um, we integrate. Teaching of the Holocaust and genocide, uh, into K to twelve classrooms so that. Students are fully aware of what happened. Um, and I think they anticipated what is beginning to happen now where. Um, we, we knew within, you know, fifteen, twenty, thirty years. Those individuals who had survived the Holocaust would be, would be no longer with us. And so we wanted to strengthen and bolster. The need to, to make sure we never forget. So then the homicide law came in in two thousand and two, um, also interestingly, a movie of the same name. And the, um, the homicide law has established that there should be, uh, in, inclusion enforcement of African-American studies. Specifically focusing on contributions, um, stories being placed in rightful context and history. Uh, within English art, arts classes and social studies classes, um, in New Jersey public schools. Um, and that's been reaffirmed now, uh, twice, uh, most recently in two thousand and twenty-one. And I did want to say in two thousand and eighteen, when it was reaffirmed, it was Chris Christie that was behind that reaffirming that and how important that was. So. You know, in terms of where we're at now, I think, you know, in the last eight years, things have become, become really controversial. Especially I wanted to talk a little bit about the CRT, but I'll get to that and if, you know, the, the idea of critical race theory being taught in classrooms. Um, one of the reasons why teachers were so surprised by that is because, you know, we have been since two thousand and two. Asked to, to, you know, weave within our curriculums and, and language arts and social studies, a very strong, um. African-American history in, in the classroom and not just in February, not just, uh, you know, during the month of February, which is African-American History Month, but. Throughout the year, throughout K to twelve, uh, curriculum. And then, uh, in two thousand and twenty-one, the diversity and inclusion instruction focused on LGBTQ rights. Uh, of which Tom did a good job. I, I, I'm not going to talk as much about that, but I will talk about my point of view on that. And then in two thousand and twenty-two, we have an Asian American Pacific Islander, a mandate. So these, these are mandates now that. Um, require all school districts to integrate these instructional practices. Um, in the classroom. So, um, you know, talking about Holocaust and genocide, how important this mandate is. You know. Obviously we see what's going on in the Middle East. We know that this is creating, um, a rise in antisemitism. A need to have a, a, a really good understanding of, uh, Jewish history. And especially of course antisemitism. And we can see that, uh, antisemitism has been on the rise precipitously. Uh, in the last five to six years. Um, in terms of the homicide commission, um, I know. Personally, having, having been a teacher and a coach, um, when the homicide commission came in. You know, I, I really felt like I was doing a good job because I was teaching the civil rights movement. And, and, you know, when I was asked to show how I was integrating, um, African-American history in my curriculum, I would point to, you know, February. And in my teaching of the civil rights movement, if I was teaching American history. Um, I, I never felt as if, if I was teaching world history, for example, you know, I, I maybe the, the, uh, the middle passage in slavery. Uh, for a brief period of time in, in world history, but I can tell you in the last eight to ten years. Um, I have gone through a transformation, um, personal transformation in the way I approach instruction. At the need to, to, to really look more closely at the Amistad Law and the mandate and to integrate, um, you know. The, the opportunity for my students, especially students of color, but any students really. To inquire and investigate all year long into the contributions of African-Americans within American society and world history. Um, and to kind of right the ship sometimes and, and something that happens with, um. With the way we teach. There is something called implicit bias that I've become very interested in, in the last, especially the last six years. Um, these are these unconscious attitudes and stereotypes that. Um, can inadvertently manifest themselves, uh, especially in suspend, suspension rates, um, in schools. Uh, so for example, when, when we were challenged to take a look at suspension rates in Westminster Plainsboro. School district, you know, a district that we really patted ourselves in the back feeling that we were, you know, very diverse, um, many. Children of color, uh, in our, um, our, our, um, our schools. But when we look specifically at African-American students, we were appalled to see what the suspension rates were. Um, and they, and they really are across the, the state of New Jersey. You can see by the chart down to the, to the right-hand side. And this really kind of, you know, for me. Points directly to what was happening with, um, the George Floyd incident. And, and we're really with, with many more incidents that were occurring way before George Floyd. That should have, you know, been the canary in the coal mine for any educator in the classroom. Uh, a need to really push into this issue of implicit bias, uh, within schools, obviously in, in the, uh. Um, a, a big issue in the, um, um, the police force as well. And then finally, um, well, not finally, this is the last, uh, second to last, the diversity and inclusion instruction. Laws, uh, that came in in twenty twenty-one. Um, this came in amidst the pandemic. Um, and I know for me it was challenging. Um, but as, as I did with, um, the need to understand the roots of the homicide commission law. It didn't take me long to see, um, this, the, the science, uh, that really had not been a part of my instruction as a teacher. You know, for example, um, I, I was never aware that, um. And, and the statistics are, are very unclear on this, but, but they're, they're. Generally scientists believe they've got pretty solid numbers because, um, in terms of. Global census taking, it's hard to, to get a, 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 a good figure on this just because many people who are. Are around the world who are intersex or transgender are oftentimes don't report. Um, for various reasons. So, um, but generally speaking, scientists will tell you that about one point seven percent. Of babies born, um, are, are born intersexed and that's about the same percentage as redheads. You know, so when you begin to think about that issue, you begin to realize that. You're dealing with an issue in your, in your classroom that you may have not been paying attention to. That needed to be paid attention to. And since I've been using pronouns in my classroom and I've been teaching my students to use quote pronouns. Um, every year out of, you know, a hundred and ten to a hundred and thirty students that I have in an average year. Uh, I, I have three to four students who are, who define themselves as they are them, um, not as he or him or, or, uh, she or her. And so, uh, you know, something else I wanted to point to is, uh, the issue of suicide. When we look at suicide. Numbers, uh, especially in the last five years. They've gone through the roof for, for young people. It's the number one, the number two killer of young people in our schools is suicide. Um, and, um. And so I take this seri, this issue very seriously, the issue of, of creating a, a, a classroom that is inclusive. And culturally responsive to, uh, students, uh, who are experiencing, um. That issue. And then finally, the Asian American and Pacific Islander. You know, during the, the pandemic, we saw the rise in, uh, hate crimes against Asian American and Pacific Islanders, simply because. Um, we had individuals who were referring to a novel virus, um, as somehow. A tribute attributed towards a, uh, a geographical group of people. Um, and, um, and it was just so sad to see that occur in this day and age. Um, but, but when this happened, you know, New Jersey stepped up and said, hey, we've really got to push into this and, and include. Within our, our teaching, um, the contributions of Asian Americans and Pacific Islanders. You know, within our, um, within American society. And so when I think about everything that I've shared with you as a, as a practitioner. The words culturally responsive classroom. This is, um. This is what we've been studying as practitioners, creating an environment where students are, um, not only seen. You know, in their seats, um, seen, uh, for who they are in terms of what they exhibit on the outside. But also seen for who they are from where they come. And so I love this picture because, you know, that's that, that's the roots. And if you imagine trees, right? There's so much that, that is unseen beneath the surface with a tree that makes up a tree and feeds that tree and makes that tree. Strong or, or maybe not as strong or, uh, in need of, uh, aid, you know, if you think a tree might need your help. I see the same way. I, I look at children the same way in the classroom, um, that. I need to take time to get to know my students, uh, to create that culturally responsive classroom. So that I can meet them where they are. I can give them opportunities to see themselves in the curriculum, especially in a history curriculum. Um, and so I just love this image because I think it helps kind of spell this out. With how, uh, an average practitioner like myself is probably approaching these mandates. Um, and then, you know, in terms of what does that mean? You know, what am I doing that is culturally responsive? You know, I, I teach in a district where about eighty-five percent of my students have names that I am. Vastly unprepared to, to pronounce. Um, and so I spend an inordinate amount of time just making sure that I'm pronouncing my, my students' names correctly. And not giving them a nickname, you know, and, and think about how many teachers, you know, give. Individuals with difficult names, nicknames. So we, we really work hard not to do that. You know, uh, encourage the use of any language in the classroom. Obviously reading books that reflect. Students who have different, uh, experiences beyond the, you know, the, um, what we would call the. You know, the master narrative, um, you know, are we still teaching a basic? Meta narrative that is, um, similar to what you learn in school? Yes. You know, we're not, you know, there are a lot of people out there that feel like schools are running away from teaching, you know. Um, a narrative that is prideful for, uh, what America stands for and, you know, through history and, and in the world. Um, I can tell you that there is no teacher that I know that, that's doing that. Um, but we are working hard to make sure that we are complicating the narrative, providing students opportunities to see. Um, their, um, their background, their history, their, uh, 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 ethnic racial. Uh, country of origin background. We want to make sure that we give a lot of choice, uh, as well. So, you know, when I say I teach historical thinking. When we're, we're working on a unit, let's say we're working on right now, I can tell you we're working on the world three hundred years ago. Uh, we encourage students to, um, to get to know the, 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 the important context of a time period, you know, the, the general. Story of three hundred years ago, the European story, the African story, the, the South American story, the, uh, Asian story, the South Asian story. Maybe, uh, maybe, um, uh, oceanic stories, um, uh, Pacific Islander stories. To, to make sure that we're not just focusing on one story. Uh, and then to try to weave those stories all together to see how all that comes together as a, as kind of a, a new master narrative. And so I don't want to walk through every single one of these. I'm sure maybe you've looked at some of the ones that I pointed out and there's more here, but I thought this would be helpful to see. What it is a practitioner is doing to make these, um, these administrative codes become. Real in the classroom and, 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 uh, uh, and not just be, you know. A one and done approach, but something that, that courses throughout the entire curriculum.
Okay, Tom, Chris. Thank you very much for the presentations. Are there any questions at this time? Please put your hand up. Yes, Angela. Unmute yourself, please.
First of all, I just want to say that, um, I really appreciate the fact that. Mister Brad Bradley, Tom, since I got the name wrong, see? Started off with, this is a list of my assumptions. This is, this is a perspective that I'm going to tell you this so you can understand the framework. And then at the end, I really, really, really like the fact that Chris does make. The attempt to pronounce these children's names correctly. That's one of the things that I used to do. In fact, they would just say they were so frustrated and irritated that people kept saying their names incorrectly. They would just say, just call me Jim. And it just generally was a very ni, simple name, Gia. Like how, how, how difficult is that? But I had a question. Okay, that was my comments. I had a, 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 a question. Um, so board visits, I'm sorry. If the, um, information of the, uh, man, or not mandates, if the. Rules come from federal down. How are, um, the boards able or the, the districts or whatever? How, how are they able to get at? Oh, now we're banning books. Because I'm thinking that that is, um. A way that like a few people wanted to do this, but the rest of them, if they're, if they're not following. If that's not in the best interest of everybody in the state, how are they able to do that? Or maybe it's not done in New Jersey. Uh, I don't have a child in the school system at this point, so I may not know. Am I off course there?
It's, uh, just to be clear, um, the. The right to educate is a state's right. Right? The only laws that pass down through, uh, federal levels. Would be, um, things to do with civil rights. Things that would apply to anybody, anywhere. They do not make educational, uh. Cannot make educational laws, but they do to enforce at the federal level is controlled funding. So if you don't follow the rules, um, you don't necessarily get the funding, right? So there's no legal teeth, honestly. Except for civil rights, which is what we're talking about here, right? One of those civil rights is, um, the right to free speech, right? So I do see that some schools. Are, I wouldn't use the word banning books, although there are some who would love to ban books. I don't see it happening a lot in New Jersey. But there always has been in every school district I've ever worked in or visit. A policy in place for parents to review and question books. Not necessarily take them away because I, I never did support that idea. Uh, so. A parent who objects to a book can raise a complaint. There's a form on every page of most every school district. That knows what's up. They can challenge the book. It's then reviewed by a committee. A decision is made. The board does weigh in on that. And, uh, it either will go one way or the other. Most often, thankfully. Um, it is not removed. A parent can. Have their child excuse for reading that book if they have a. Strongly held belief, faith or something like that, they can. And their child will be given an alternative assignment.
Okay, so again, basically what I'm hearing is not necessarily what's going on in this state.
Right.
And Angela, the other, the other thing I just want to say quickly is oftentimes these issues get politicized or they get framed within whatever. News. Whatever, you know, silo you might be, you know, um, consuming your media in. And I do see as a practitioner, it's, it's always a tempest in a teapot. It's never what you think, you know, so. I, I know there was a big thing about in our school district, um, I think there were some books that. That, that individuals wanted to have kept off the shelves, but put behind the librarian's desk. And that was turned into a, a move to ban books. And it wasn't, you know, it was just discretionary. Um, but you know, things like this can become, um, blown out of proportion for, for reasons that somebody feels like they want to. Use that as a platform to maybe. Make a name for themselves. So I do see that happen. Both sides.
Angela? Google threats to teachers. And librarians in New Jersey. And you will learn that there are cases where people. On the far right. Moms for Liberty have come to board, have come to board meetings. And have defamed librarians in this state. And there are now lawsuits against. Those parents that have defamed these people. But the threats and, uh. The fear of threats that some librarians are feeling is very palpable in, in parts of our state. Any other questions or comments? Any other questions or comments? Anne, good to see you, lady.
Anne.
Hi, thank you. I have numerous questions. Please um choose the ones that you think are even valid to ask. So I'm gonna go through uh through them. Um, for the charter schools, I was wondering the demographics of where they're mostly located. I was also wondering with private schools, are they mandated at all with the state education standards? Um, and do they receive vouchers? My question on the school board was code code of ethics, how easily is that enforced and is that enforced? And then on the rights of parents to determine whether their children can receive certain sexual education. Um, do the children have their own rights in terms of, say, the parents don't want them to have it, but they want to have it? Can they do that? I do understand that you did speak that transgender. It appears that the student has a right, but I'm wondering if that is also a right for other things that maybe there's a disagreement between parent and um student. And three other questions and that's all. Um, what is the, is there a conflict between state mandates versus patient right? A parent rights? And then the other two questions are for the Holocaust teaching, how far do you go? With that, do you stop at like nineteen forty-seven? Or how far do you go in terms of the Holocaust and the rights and the uh establishment of Israel? And then for the Amistad law, I'm interested in the use of the wording African Americans. Um, and uh wondering because um there are many black Americans that are from Haitia, uh from Haiti or from other areas and not necessarily African Americans. And I'm wondering about that, the use of that language. So you can either throw out all of them or answer one or two of them, whatever. Thank you and wonderful presentations.
Tom, why don't I take the last two questions real quick to get those off the board and then I'll let you.
You're demonstrating the idea of recency, right?
So I think the the last question you had is, um, you know, I'm I'm thirty years in education, I'm fifty-five years old, so oftentimes when I'm using lingo, um, I'm often using it in different stages of my life, but I do think the proper pronunciation, the proper usage of the word would be black American. So uh, yeah, so that 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 would be interesting to look at in terms of the code from from uh two thousand and two to now. I'm sure it's cha- changed, but I I would I would be um I would be surprised to see if African American is still used. I'm sure black American is is what is used and or just, you know, black history. For that, for the reason that you stated. And then um in terms of the Holocaust, you know, it's it's not just the Holocaust, it's also genocide. So so we're looking at genocide in general and, you know, we look at the slave trade as a genocide. We look at Nate, what happened to Native Americans as a gen- genocide. So um in terms of that um uh that Holocaust and genocide commission work, um, that's gone a long way. And then even when we're looking at racial history, we know that um concepts of race, uh especially within Germany, were at the heart of, you know, race and space, where it was basically, it was pushing the the Nazis to do what they did um and to develop the programs that they did, the brutal programs that they did. So, you know, it 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 the um the Amistad and um um in the Hol- Holocaust and genocide kind of come together almost, I think, like a like a um, you know, like a fine piece of you know, furniture that meets and is is carved together. That's the way I see it in terms of the way I teach. So it it's extensive. I wouldn't say that we're just focusing on the Holocaust. All throughout the curriculum, I'm I'm using opportunities to teach students how, you know, theories of race, um genocides that were were that occurred at different periods of time in history, uh not only during during the Holocaust and since the Holocaust.
So Anne, I'd like to say that I have a tremendous memory, um, but you listed, I think, like eleven questions. So can you go back to your number one?
I'm not sure they were eleven. My my question was you had the demographics. I know it did. Um, what was, what is the demographics of the charter schools? You showed those. Are they uh generally in the um, what areas are are you looking at? Are you looking, are charter schools generally in, say, um, like Camden, Newark, Trenton, or are they all over the place? What's the demographics of the charter schools?
I think they really are uh nearer to uh larger urban centers. Not necessarily all in an urban center, but they're all over the place, um, fifty-eight of them, I think. And uh turns out that some of, the charter is really supposed to be doing something innovative. Something to improve education for children that are um potentially underserved. And uh many of them, I would say, are in the cities. Uh, Trenton has three, I think. Uh, but and Princeton has one. Right? And charter schools are really supposed to improve the education for the children in the district. And Princeton's regularly number one, two or three in the state, so you wonder uh what that's about. Uh, also, I should say from a a more cynical perspective, um, so charter schools do not have to follow uh all of the codes that we talked about. Um, they don't have to. You know, there's a lot of things they don't have to do, one of which is hire certificated teachers, like a private school, right? So part of me wonders, are they simply trying to union bust? Right? And um what's the quality of the teachers? It could be better, uh, right? Maybe not. So in the current educational statistics, some of those charter schools up in Essex County are number one, two, three, four, five in the state. Right? They're selective. They can be. And by the way, they are funded by the district in which the charter school is located. So they draw money from the public education um pot. What is your second question?
Uh, my second question, you probably added it um with the charter schools was in terms of private schools. Are they uh regulated by some of those education standards and mandates?
No.
Not at all, huh?
It does turn out that um the walls are permeous to um civil rights law. Not education law. Rights apply everywhere.
Is is there many um voucher, um, is there a voucher system in New Jersey?
Um, not that I'm aware of, but I can tell you that um transportation follows uh the student wherever they go. So they're not going to necessarily pay your freight over there. They do pay for the education if this district um initiated it. Say they can't educate your child appropriately. They will pay for that, but if you choose to go, say, to a parochial school, they pay for transportation to and from.
Okay.
Okay, I see. Go ahead, Anne, one more question.
I can leave my other questions, that's fine.
Okay. Pastor Bruce, you have your hand up. Unmute yourself, please.
Yes, uh, do you? Love it.
Good evening.
Hi.
Uh, Thomas and Christopher, thank you so much. Uh, this was incredibly enlightening. Um, I think I just had uh a quick question when when uh and this is for Tom. Uh, when you were going over the uh the requirements under the different, you know, sex ed, you know, these kinds of things. At different places in the statute or in the the recommendations from the the school boards, um, it notes uh the concept of age appropriateness or the appropriateness of age level. Uh, I mean, as both a a parent uh of a child who's in the uh of two children in the school district. Um, I guess the only question that I have is, yeah, um, what standard are they using for that? Is it, is there one um, study, one standard, one group that they uh fall back on to make those kinds of determinations or are those determinations made state by state? Uh, what standard do they use for the the question of what is developmentally appropriate?
Right, so to answer your the question, your second question, uh, they vary from state to state, right? Because education is a state right.
Right.
There are fifty uh fifty different ways of approaching something. Typically, what they'll look at are local extensions of, say, the uh American Pediatrics Association, the APA, um, the psychological associations. Universities where they do research. There are centers for uh child development uh with experts in that. They do consult, um, and that consultation occurs in two places, right? One at the legislature when they're having those hearings.
Right.
They, lots of people, they, you know, they follow that and they will volunteer to come in to provide, um, you know, expert testimony or witness. And some are invited by the legislature. They also then meet uh with the Department of Education individuals. The the Department of Education has appropriately qualified individuals at at the offices that deal with that kind of thing. So there's all kinds of input into that.
Yeah.
And they make the decisions based on sort of their understanding of all that. But again, these are then um published, they're made known widely. Uh, other individuals can make comments on them either at the state level, the legislature or at the State Board of Education. And once again, you could do that in the Board of Education in the local place. We are not likely to run into experts that can make those kinds of statements, so I would always hire expertise for that.
Right.
Some that kind of gas, it it's not useful to anybody, right? So.
Right. Well, thank you. Thank you very much because I know that uh information will be helpful for folks that I uh uh I work with as well. Um, so thank you very much. I appreciate that.
And it is, it's a pendulum and it's precarious, right? Uh, because you don't want to be stepping on parents' rights and you also don't want to be not informing children when it's appropriate. Right?
Here's Scott, you have a question for us. Go ahead, Anne. Yes.
Okay, thank you, thank you. Having been an early childhood nurse in New Brunswick, I encountered many things that I i- i- it was just unbelievable. For instance, parents, the law said that you children had to be vaccinated before entering school at age three and four, okay? Many parents did not want that. So the law at the time was if you had a letter from your religious leader and quoting in your biblical, your your book of religion, where is said children not supposed to be vaccinated? And I don't know how they did it, but they did it. And those children, and then they, someone um challenged it. An attorney challenged it. They changed the law that a parent just had to say, I don't want my child vaccinated, and that was it. So then what the state did was say, okay, but if there's an outbreak of anything, your child has to leave the school and cannot return until it's completely cleared, okay? Well, the only incident we had, which they had to close, actually end up closing the schools because lice became rampant amongst our little ones and big boats. And what they did too was they allowed the parents to uh, some of them could go to charter school, but most of the charter schools wo- wouldn't take them because they knew of the incident that was happening, okay? So the children were just home. The other thing that was difficult in New Brunswick was because it would had, we were told, the largest population of undocumented children and parents. The only thing you had to prove as a parent that you lived in New Brunswick, not that you were a um citizen of the United States, okay? So that's where the bulk of our children came in. The other thing that was really difficult was, as Tom was saying and Chris, the charter schools and the um private schools did not have to follow the same rules. A public school must have a school nurse. Charter schools and private schools did not. So what the state did to try to implement that and and give the children a nurse was they started this the program in uh in New Brunswick of having um charter schools, private schools, public schools, all under the same mechanism as uh uh with with a nurse. I had eight schools that were public, private and charter, and I had to go to each one. The problem was the charter schools and and a menu, they provided the food for the children. The public schools went along with it and they had companies that served. The charter schools and the private schools either had uh someone in the kitchen cooking, but they didn't cook according to the rules. As a nurse, I had to supervise it and I would have to tell them, I can't let you serve those children that food. It's unhealthy, you know, it wasn't refrigerated, yada, 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 all that stuff. So the state came, I had to report it to the state. The state came and reviewed and and went there and we and looked at it. And and unfortunately, we lost quite a few of the charter and the private schools because they weren't following the procedures that the state implemented so that the chi- all the children would receive the same as you know, uh, public schools, that charter school, they all would receive the same. So it 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 was difficult, but it was quite an experience to go into those places and and in the charter schools, the other thing is, in a public school, as you know, a nurse is the one whom administers the medication. There, anybody could. So when I reported that, they tried to get the charter schools to change and say, no, 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 only the nurse. The nurse will get the orders and let the nurse do it. Well, sometimes they did, sometimes they didn't, but it was, it was difficult. But thank you again, Tom and Chris. It was highly educational. Thank you, thank you, thank you. It reminded me of what I went through and happily retired now.
Are there any other questions?
Or comments?
More comments. Robert Joe.
Um, I'd like to echo thanks to to the two of you for your wonderful presentation. I'd like to go back to the heading of this discussion. It's called The New Battleground. Um, and I'd like to ask each of you to s- name one or two things that you're most concerned about in this new battle. It's what you've referred to as a new battle, but I'd like to hear something more specific about uh what you're most concerned about.
So for me, um, so I didn't, I didn't name the title, um. Um, but I'll I'll stick with it.
Think it was to get all of you to come.
I'll, uh, if you'll allow me before you comment, I too am a former school administrator, Robert Joe, and if you would like my two cents on that, I'd be more than willing to share it. Thank you. Go ahead, Tom.
Oh, uh, so honestly, I have never seen anything as a battle. All right, I I see it as an opportunity. And that's why I presented it that way. There are no less than in my particular section, twelve ways of getting into a conversation with people. So what I'm most concerned about, what I'm very concerned about is the morale in schools, right? So and why is that? Because schools are constantly in New Jersey uh and everywhere, constantly beleaguered by people uh who want to impose their own will on what is a public institution. Uh, it's meant to be public. It's meant to teach all students, not just yours. And uh the sort of uniqueness of some of the requests, you know, I don't like this book, I want it removed versus I don't like this book, I don't want my kid to read it. Very different. You know, complaining all the time about the teachers, um, you know, questioning them on every book that's chosen, not understanding that teacher probably didn't choose that book. It was chosen for him or her. And uh just all kinds And uh just all kinds of things that are going on that are. Sort of nitpicking one's own individual child's issue and not understanding the very public nature of schools. In public schools is wearing them down, um I teach at Rider University as well and um. This semester, we have seven student teachers, we used to have. In this semester. You know, the state of Pennsylvania used to get eighty thousand certification requests uh a year, it got seven thousand. Right, teachers are up to their ear balls, it it fears with um. Concern and and sort of being questioned, there's nobody going into education right now, that's my one concern. My second one is um. Schools are about everybody's child, public schools, right, and. You you saw the statistics, the statistics are very alarming that Chris shared with the the idea of suicide, but there's more than suicide. You know, it's loneliness, isolation. Um not fitting in, bullying, all kinds of things like that uh that are going on because. We need to do a better job at educating our students and frankly, the community at large. To be more accepting of people, right, to accept them for where they are and who they are. So that uh gets to me and uh I guess the last one really is um. What I can only assume is a politically oriented argument or fear. Of the whole idea of transgender. And you know, uh various sexual expressions, orientations, or or identities. America, unlike uh when I was in Spain for two months earlier this year. The Spanish have. More modern thinking about the situation than we do. And it's a heavily Catholic's nation, right, so it's surprising to me. And we are just a little bit. Puritanic, right? For my taste, and it's not just about me, what happens to those children, why can't they be who they are, when the adults who choose that for themselves? I don't know, if if you don't want you to be that way, that's good, don't. Um but I wouldn't be, I wouldn't want to control what other parents think about. Their children and what they want, so those are the kinds of things that I would be concerned with, um civil rights.
Chris? Yeah, so um I think the naming of of our session is to is to draw all of you here. My my concern is that um. As we move forward with social media and now with artificial intelligence. We are, we are being. Kind of led down, I think, these paths um that are dangerous. And they undermine the institutional history and um in the in the good sense that. People that came before me had to create. You know, local laws and constitutional law and just, you know, all this um. Kind of the bulwark, um uh you know, there's a movie that I uh remember watching and loving when I was younger called The Man for All Seasons. And in A Man for All Seasons, the movie, okay, this is not the actual Man for All Seasons, Thomas, Thomas More, but. Um he has this great saying, he says, you know, what happens when you rip down all the all the laws because you think you know what's best? You know, you're you kind of unleash the devil, and when when and when you let the devil out, he's gonna come, you know, first for you. Um and I and I think that's what I get concerned about, is that it seems to me. I've been teaching for thirty years and having taught the Holocaust, I can tell you the one thing you need to know about Hitler is that Hitler loved chaos. That's how he came to power. He he had no plan. You know, he would try something, it didn't work, he'd back away from it, but he knew that if he could create chaos. He had the 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 group of people that were willing to follow him and take advantage of that chaos. And I've been teaching this now for thirty years, um and then also the rest of us have hope. You know, so if you ever read Night. We we have all this hope that everything is gonna work out. Um so I I just think we all need to be very concerned, um and that's why Interfaith Community Builders. Does these town town talks, because we hope that we are laying the foundation for more town talks. And maybe the town talks will get larger and larger, and maybe this may be a place that, you know, can be a can be a bulwark that we can come to 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 talk. And to hear information that is, you know, that is local and that it's filled with faith. Um because I know that's what drew us all together, we were drawn together by the the horrible incidents with the George Floyd incidents. And you know, I know I've I felt better about being connected to this group, um and I feel. I feel good that we offer these these programs throughout the year and then do things like Juneteenth and and other community building activities as well, so um. Yeah, and you know, just to kind of end, you know, Lincoln talks of a mystic court of memory. And I think that's just what we have to remember is that there is a, there is this idea that we are, we've, we come, we came together to create. A nation built on the idea that, you know, everyone is is created equal and has, should have protections. And be hu- treated with with dignity, I know we didn't live up to those ideas in in many ways early on. But throughout our history, we've shr- we've striven, um no such word, but I'm I'm gonna say it, because the um. I use it in my classroom, um you know, in the Constitution, we have a grammatical error that that we say we um. We strive for a more perfect union. Um there's no such thing as more perfect, right, so if you're an English teacher, you get angry at that, but we do. Um so I get worried that we're we're being. That the media is being politicized and politis-politicization and fear sells. Uh it causes us to stay on on and and click more and maybe buy more products and um and I just hope that. You know, we have things like the Interfaith Community Builders and Town Talks and and places we can go to. You know, to keep ourselves pushing through to pursue that mystic court of memory that. Will continue to make our, you know, our nation or world a. A more perfect place.
So my take. Is that we are a nation that is governed by a constitution. We are a nation of laws, and I think Tom did an excellent job tonight of pointing out the laws that govern. Education in the state of New Jersey. Beyond that, we are a nation that says, one person, one vote. And that should be what determines what happens in our. Democracy, in our local school boards and our state legislatures, we should have. Rule of law and people should vote the people in that they want. A free public education has been a cornerstone of building our democracy. I think the program was aptly titled because one only has to look at the fact that. Librarians, teachers are quitting because they are being harassed. We have a government that is dysfunctional at this very moment. Because a po- political party cannot get its act together. To deal with governing us as a nation. We have the ongoing crisis in Israel and in Palestine. We are a world that is in need of humanity and laws. And I think there's no better place to start than at the local level at school boards to demand that we respect each other. And that, you not wanting a book that was so dear to my daughter and to the kids in the school that I principal. Hello, God, it's me, Margaret, that some schools across this nation are banning that book. Why should you have the privilege to take that book away from a parent and a child that wants to read it? So I think there's a need for a better discourse and us to honor and obey by the laws that we put in place. And with that, good night, and thank you all for coming, and again, Tom and Chris, thumbs up.
Thank you, everybody.